Okay, we'll call all board members that present. occasions for me. Okay, first thing on the agenda is recommendation to approve the minutes of the October 20th. Regular board meeting, the October 27th special board meeting and the November 1st special second special school board meeting and the November 8th school board workshop. Hey, so make some good news. Okay, who by any saying like Kim to approve all four sets of minutes, any discussion or changes? Uh, owes the favors guy.
I.
O's carried. Say resolution approve the October bill list.
I made a motion to approve.
Move by any, I second, signed by Chris to approve the October bill list, any questions, comments, questions? Uh, owes the favors guy.
I.
Carried. Alright. Next time is the superintendent's report.
Good evening, the first part of my report actually comes with some guest speakers. A fabulous fire and health teacher Julie Marazo is here along with a guest from the community pastor Mary Jane Huber, who has been helping our help classes and actually our staff with some professional development and student lessons for maybe four years, five years now. So I'll turn it over to Julie first and I'll go do a presentation.
Okay, good evening, um, yeah, about five years ago Laura Meyer invited Pastor Mary Jane Huber to speak to teachers here. Everybody that was interested in hearing about human trafficking, so all the health and education teachers attended that meeting and we very quickly decided that we wanted to invite her to speak with our health classes. And so when we asked her after the presentation if she'd be willing to do that, she responded by saying she will talk to anyone, anywhere, anytime on human trafficking and I've heard her say that many times. So she's been speaking to our health classes ever since, even last year by Zoom. That was an interesting experience, so we're very grateful that she's back, back with us in person. And to be honest, um, we had a very vague and very inaccurate idea of what human trafficking really is. So we have been learning right along with our students, so it's my pleasure to introduce Pastor Mary Jane Huber.
In other words that students know all too well, pop quiz. I'm serious, I have five questions on quiz and you might want, I will give you the answers at the end, so you might want to jot notes down. I would like you to list the number of the percentage of counties in the state of Wisconsin in which there have been reports of sex trafficking. Percentage of counties and was anybody else can do this quiz. Second question is the average age of a first encounter with a trafficker. Average age. Third question is life expectancy of someone who is being trapped. How many years would you imagine they would be in that they would live after being trapped in the beginning of their trap? Next question is the daily number of average number of sexual encounters, person who's being trapped for sex. Has to engage, average number of sexual encounters per day. And then the fourth, the fifth question is what do you imagine the profile is of the average buyer according to the FBI? Do you think, or what do you think that person might look like, those person might look like? So question number one, percentage of counties. Anybody want to give an answer?
Sixty percent.
Sixty percent incorrect.
Higher or lower?
Higher.
Higher.
Higher. One hundred percent, all seventy-two counties in the state of Wisconsin have documented cases of sex trafficking. They're documented in different places in different ways because our law enforcement officers, our law enforcement is regional, you know, municipal, and so they, the way that it gets recorded and processed sometimes looks a little different, but in every county, it has been documented by law enforcement that both at the state and or the federal level because sex trafficking in Wisconsin is prosecuted on both state statutes and federal statutes, law enforcement gets together, figures out which case is going to be the better case and they'll prosecute that way. The average age.
Twelve.
Twelve, yeah, eleven and twelve. Now that does not mean that that's the first sexual engagement, but it's the time when a trafficker will meet a person and it can be younger and it can be old. When I talk to, in, I've been to several Department of Justice training on human trafficking here in state and one of the law enforcement officers that I met from Racine County said the youngest victim that he personally had encountered was six, a six-year-old boy. The oldest person he had encountered was a sixty-two-year-old woman. So there is vulnerability across the board and people need to be aware of that. Life expectancy, how long do you think people live in life, last in life? And that's what it's called, the, when you're in the traffic, when you're being trafficked, it's called the life. It is not the life you want to live, but, but how long do you think people last? Thirty-five? Thirty-five?
Ten years, twenty.
When it's seven years. And so I, and so, and I asked at Department of Justice training, I remember the woman said specifically seven years was a number I was aware of, and I said, what does that mean? And that, does that mean that after seven years they get to go be an accountant? And she said, no, in seven years, they're dead. That death occurs from a murder by a buyer. It could happen by the hands of their trafficker, it could happen at their own hand, by suicide and or other accidental death. There are a very small percentage of people who get out of the life. I have had been blessed to meet several of them and the horror stories they can tell of people they knew. And what happened to them, this is not something we want to happen to anyone. And so Julie's right that I will talk to anybody, anywhere, anytime about it, it means that one person, one person doesn't buy and one person doesn't get more. Average daily sexual encounters. An average.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, you're very good, right? Sixteen-ish, now that means that's an average, y'all know how averages work, right? Take all the numbers, you add them up and you divide them by days, so some days there may be fewer, maybe even none. And other days there may be more. It is not a life for anyone to live. The profile of an average buyer, what do you think the FBI, that's why you write down some notes, Kim? White suburban male, white suburban man, thirty-five-year-old married white man is the FBI's average buyer. So when I look at our students, particularly in the boys, the, and I have had the blessing to be able to speak to the boys and the girls separately most of the time, last year we were combined. They're not the only buyer, men are not the only buyers, women do also buy, women are traffickers, so it's not, this is not a discriminatory endeavor on any part. But when I look at our young men here, I would say, you know, you have choice between now and the rest of your life to not buy, to not engage in this activity, to say, you know, hey, it's a strip club, it's a this thing, it's a that thing, then you're just going to do whatever, you know, hey, nobody knows, they know. The person that you're using, no. And it's something that we shouldn't ever have to do. Sex trafficking of a child, you know, there's statutes that require law enforcement to prove force, fraud or coercion with an adult to, to make sure that that's prosecutable as sex trafficking. With a minor force fraud and coercion are often involved, but they do not have to be proved. If someone is engaging in sexual activity for anything, exchange of anything, it also doesn't have to be money. It can be, you know, a ride, food, a place to stay, be drugs, could be whatever. In exchange for anything, that can be considered sex trafficking. It could be two minors, it doesn't matter, if there's an exchange for anything, that is against, if there's an exchange, anything in exchange for sex, that is against the law with a minor. We educate our students here, I have been blessed to be able to do that for the last number of years, so that now the majority of the students that have passed through Arrowhead in the last five years have heard a presentation on sex trafficking. It's one day, one class, one hour, but the thing that, that I know is that I spoke to a young lady who was a senior here taking classes at M A T C, at W C T C, and they, the young person told me that when the topic came up in the class that she was taking there, she was the only person mixed ages, mixed experience, the only person who had information about sex trafficking, she got it here. So I really appreciate that, makes a difference. Students need to know about it because there are people who are vulnerable, but as that Racine County officer said, the one victim was sixty-two, each one of us can be vulnerable, so we need to know about it. And I think that we need to do more, I would, I would like to ask to do more for faculty because it's a situation that doesn't always appear, doesn't, isn't always readily understood by those persons being trafficked. Groomer, someone who will groom an individual is very, very, very good at it. They will take their sweet time, they will do what's necessary, the idea that someone's getting kidnapped and snatched, yes, that does happen. But that is a rarer occasion, a rarer situation in sex trafficking than a slow, steady grooming process that they're willing to take time because they're going to make money. Human trafficking over global, which includes sex trafficking, labor trafficking, trafficking and organ trafficking is approximately one hundred and fifty-one billion dollar industry. A big amount of money, and that's an estimate of course because, hey, nobody's reporting it to the IRS anywhere. It is all under the table, it's all we can get, so it is big business, it's big money, they'll do what it takes to get that. And so if our faculty are more aware of what it, how it can present, when a student comes to them, I think that's better. Because students will talk to, they don't, they could talk to the health teachers and the fire teachers, they all know, they've heard it multiple times. But your other teachers haven't necessarily. And I would encourage, I would like, love the opportunity to do that more training so that when a student comes and says, you know, my boyfriend is, my girlfriend that, like, whatever, they might say, they could say, little red flag, just might go up. So that's what I have for you, so you pass your pop quiz and you get a prize. Yes, you get a prize, there's a folder that includes some information that I hence approved and the war about the work that's being done here in Lockwood County, anti-trust, anti-human trafficking task force, as well as certain general information, as well as my contact information, if you have questions, general questions?
Thank you.
Something that surprised you, yeah?
Is there anything that our students can know or your personnel to help develop this?
Um, that the students can know, that's what we, that's why I will be in four classes tomorrow morning at seven twenty, starting at seven twenty. And so I tell them what I can, the teachers are aware, and again, the more faculty, the more community knows. So I really encourage you, look at the information in there, the Lockwood County Task Force is a countywide task force addressing the issue, and all our hotels and motels are everything, oh, the tourist industry, the law enforcement, the ecumenical religious communities are all working together to reduce it. So yeah, there's a lot they can know, but I got fifteen minutes, so there's more there. So I'll be here as long as I'm invited back, and she's right, so if anybody, anywhere, anytime. It means that somebody doesn't get raped sixteen times.
Yeah, we had an in-service here for faculty and staff on the October twentieth. And one of the breakout sessions was on this very topic.
Oh, good.
Young woman that talked to us about, she was a survivor of sex trafficking and you're right, she talked about the life.
Good.
I think the thing that I found quite shocking was that it wasn't the women or young men who were being kidnapped in a Walmart parking lot or whatever. Thing I found really surprising was the amount of time that they would work to groom somebody and it's not overnight, I know it's subtle, very subtle and kind of led into it not realizing where they're going. And it was, it's really, really terrifying.
It, a trafficker can, and I wish I should, you don't get it, the whole, the whole spiel, but tomorrow, as your stories are proven and I, particularly I know only, I personally only know women survivors, survivors. And the story they shared with me about their life is what I share with kids. To, it's, it's real, nothing is explicit, but it's, it's grounded in what really does happen. So that they get an idea, and again, whether they're paying attention or not, I'm not in control of that, but, another question?
I had a question, thank you for presenting this, and I know when I took the quiz, I underestimated on a lot of these things. It's a scary stats overall. Is there information available or, you know, I know we have a pamphlet here, but I was just thinking of the parents of the students here, if there's like video or anything that, of presentations that you've done that they can listen to, just so they're aware, they're aware in their.
Yeah, there's not one that I have, but I can certainly get, there are one that I've done, my other school districts in Virginia and other places, that I can easily make a list available tomorrow and then you guys can disseminate that in the way that's most appropriate for your student body.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm gonna, I can, good time.
I have one question too, like, how prevalent do you know is it in our community? Do you have any statistics or?
I, statistics are a dicey issue because depends on what somebody gets picked up for. I do know there was a student here who was trafficked, I do know there are students who have had issues around pornography and things like that, so yet it's, it is not somewhere else. And even if it's one student. One student is worth it in my book, because this is nothing anybody wants to encounter. And so, yeah, it does happen here. I wish I could say that, oh no, it's somewhere else, but we're in one of those one hundred percent of the counties. So it does happen here.
And I just want to again thank Pastor Mary Jane Huber for everything she's doing, not only for Arrowhead students and faculty, but also for the community that knowledge, knowledge is powerful, so thank you. And Julie Marazo, fire and health teacher, we're continuing to bring her back in to help our students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next part, I'm going to use the microphone here since I'll be speaking for five minutes, which for me probably means more like ten. The monthly COVID nineteen and health data update that I have for you. I usually start with some county information and then go to Arrowhead information from the county health department meeting and you may be interested to know that superintendents for the last year had been meeting on a weekly basis with the health department. Now we've gone to every other week, which is good news because it isn't quite as critical any longer. Some additional good news, the month of October in terms of positive COVID cases in our county were down twelve percent from September. Thirty-two percent of the cases in our county during the month of October were eighteen years old and younger. The last half of October, the health department was seeing an uptick in school age cases and about sixty percent of that uptake were age six to eleven years old. The health department repeat, reports no change in hospitalizations and deaths, those are steady, there is no concern about overwhelmed hospitals. So that's all good news. The health department director said that COVID nineteen and particularly the Delta, Delta variant, that that's, the way he put it, was spreading quickly among the unvaccinated. Several elementary classrooms in particular in our county have closed for ten to fourteen days or had to move to virtual emergency learning because of cases in their classrooms. And the health department reported that they are increasing testing capacity because now we're heading into the flu and virus season and so it will be hard for people to determine what kind of illness they have, and so more people may be getting tested, doesn't necessarily mean more COVID, but more testing will go on, so the county is ready to act on that and provide free ground to test it. As for Arrowhead, as of this afternoon after school, in students, we have five positive COVID cases. Less than five cases in staff members and as the board knows, if it's less than five, then we don't give an exact number because that potentially impinge on confidentiality if it ends up identifiable. So far this school year, there have been eleven cases of COVID in staff members. There have been one hundred three positive cases in students. And we do know that as the school year has gone on, it seems as though fewer and fewer students are being tested. So we have a lot more illness absences this school year than we have pre-COVID. We don't know if those are cases of COVID or not. In the two years before COVID hit, so in the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, maybe twenty nineteen school year as well, we averaged eighteen students out per day from illness, illness alone. And right now, last week, we averaged eighty students out per day, so about six times more students are out ill currently. And that is my COVID data update, any questions on that? And then just to round out or end my superintendent report, I just want to share, all of you on the board, you know that Arrowhead loves veterans, we do a lot each year for veterans, including tomorrow is our annual Veterans Day breakfast, so we're looking forward to that. And then some of you may have seen, if you haven't, I highly encourage you to go to Fox Six News. You'll, you'll be able to find the video, Dancing Chuck. If you, if you know Dancing Chuck, he's highly involved with Honor Flight and Karen, who is now the Honor Flight board president, has also been a public relations person for Honor Flight and she started taping Chuck in his dancing. Dancing Chuck turns ninety-nine years old on December twenty-second. His beautiful bride Bev is ninety-seven, they're, they're one of my favorite couples in the whole world, they are amazing. And he does this annual dance for his birthday, it's usually to Christmas music. Often it's in his living room or on his front porch, well, this time he came to Arrowhead. So he did his dance, it was recorded, Fox Six News was there, it's a cute little one-minute, twenty-second story that will be released by Honor Flight sometime after Thanksgiving and Chuck has become famous, not just in our community, he lives nearby, but across our country. People watch and wait for Chuck across the world, millions of views of the video, it's just really sweet. So I encourage you to check out Dancing Chuck and I want to especially thank our music department and our instrumental music director, teacher Jake Palancic, that not only helped organize this, but he wrote a piece of music, he composed it specifically for Chuck and then the students in that band group learned how to play it, so it was really special, it was, it was a really nice day here at Arrowhead because of that. And that's all for my superintendent report.
Yeah, Chuck is a, well, he'll be ninety-eight, he'll be ninety-nine on December twenty-second, Jack prepared my dad's. He was a torpedo bomber pilot in World War Two, as he said, he flew the largest single aircraft in the world at the time off the shortest carrier in the world at the time. Great guy. The day he turned ninety-eight, he was no longer ninety-eight, he was going on ninety-nine, so it's kind of like a three-year-old, you ask him, how old that one, three, three, three years and two weeks, you know? Give him something to look forward to, but yeah, they've known each other for eighty-three years, they've lived in the same house in Lockwood for sixty years. He literally has become world famous, he's gotten calls from all over the world, he's been on TV shows, just incredible, so. Great, great individual, so that was a lot of fun. So anyway. Well. Get the back of my head. So the next thing is the communication comments from, from numbers of public, and we do have some round rules, which I'd like to read for you. So requires that anyone wishing to speak, the board be present and register on the sign and form, which I've got up here. So if anybody wants, wants to speak and hasn't, you've got an opportunity to still sign up. We're enforcing a three-minute time limit, okay? At that point, I'll, I'll just ask you, you know, educate, but please wrap it up. Public comment is only accepted during this agenda item, okay, not during the actual, not during the actual board meeting. Speakers should address the board, I'm sorry, sharing a minute with another person is not permitted, so I can't use one bit to give someone else my other two minutes. Should address the entire board, not individual board members, okay? Only board president may respond to the comments or questions and board president has the authority to ask another board member or administrator to respond, typically we will not. Board members will respond, will not respond to public comments unless designated by the board president. Board president has the authority to cease any conversation at any time for any reason. Public comments will be taken under advisement, if public comments are in regard to an agenda item, when the board discusses that particular item during meeting, the board may or may not address the comments or questions addressed by the, by the public. Only the board will discuss and or take action, there will be no existing communications during the time of the agenda, agenda topics. So with that, I will call individuals up to, to address the board that has to speak. So with that, Grace Spilsky. She's not a resident, but she is a staff member here, so.
Hi, everyone, can you hear me in this or do I just need to talk real loud? Okay, I'm Grace Spilsky and I've been teaching choir here at AHS since two thousand and nine. I know serving on the school board is a big responsibility and I know that this responsibility and care for our community is something you take very seriously, so thank you. I came tonight to express concerns and be a voice for some of our students that are made to feel like they don't belong at our school. Specifically, our students in the LGBTQ plus community. In choir, I have the privilege of teaching music and sharing life with many students. Some are confident with their vocal abilities, some are not, some are gifted in academics, some struggle, some are incredibly athletic and some dread physical activity. Some have many friends, some wish they had one to call friend. Some have figured out who they are and some are still trying to understand their identity. No matter our varying histories, we learn to work together and co-create a music experience during rehearsal and performance. As you work together and address these issues concerning our students, please remember that you are speaking about real people in our building. We often have no idea what they are going through. Our job is to support students and give them the safest environment to come and learn and be themselves. Our job is to support students and give them the safest environment to come and learn and be themselves. While your own convictions might lead you to believe that being transgender, non-binary, or part of the LGBTQ plus community is wrong, that doesn't make it right to speak about these students in a way that makes them feel isolated in our building and less than human. How we refer to students matters. They hear us, they look up to us. And whether we mean to or not, derogatory language stays with them and can detrimentally affect their well-being. Some teachers have asked students to share their preferred pronouns via surveys because we have been in real-life situations where we use the wrong pronoun. I am one of those teachers who has got it wrong. We are not trying to promote any kind of agenda. We are simply trying to be sensitive to each student's individual needs. That is our job to make each student feel welcome and a valued member of our school. LGBTQ plus students are not here to make problems at, at school. They are part of our student body and want to feel included and valued. Instead, there are incidents where these students are being bullied by peers and made to feel less than human. If you need detailed examples concerning this, I'm sure administration and guidance can offer insight. Again, thank you for serving our students and community. The work you do, the way you talk about students, the decisions you make matter.
Oh, you are. Okay. And your name is?
Yeah, I'm a senior here at Arrowhead. There has been questioning among the board of whether teachers should ask their students to report their preferred pronouns. I have listened to the concerns raised about this issue and I'm confident that there's nothing to be done against this simple question. According to Aaron Ballmer, the American Speech Language Hearing Association, children begin to acquire the use of pronouns between 12 months old and 47 months old. Learning pronouns such as they, she, and he around the 31 to 40-month age range. This idea of pronoun use has solidified in minds of children from an early age. Therefore, asking students for their personal pronouns should not provoke confusion as to how the students should respond to the question. I would also like to point out that asking for students' pronouns is simply a form of respect. Teachers should not resort to assuming students' pronouns based on appearance. As we know that someone's appearance does not necessarily align with their gender identity. By asking students to share their pronouns, teachers create a more safe and comfortable environment for students to be more comfortable with societal gender identity. In regards to a specific use of Genesis 1:7, in the signature of Ones of them, a Bible verse which states, "So God created man in his own image, in the image of God who created them, male and female, who created them." I would like to say, what a mockery of anyone who is not cisgender. And I would also like to say that it's used at a public high school where religion is not taught, it's not appropriate. But if we're using Bible quotes anyway, might I leave the board to think about these quotes? There is no merit, male and female, for you are all one under Christ Jesus, Galatians 3:20. Therefore, choose life, that both you and your sin may live, Deuteronomy 30:19. And love is patient, love is calm. It does not boast, it is not proud, it does not dishonor others, it is not self-seeking, it is not easily angered. It keeps no righteous of wrongs. It's always protect, it always protects, always trusts, always helps, always preserves. First letter from Paul to the Corinthians 13, 45 and 7. Let's work together to form a loving and accepting community for all students, now and future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Christopher Cross. Chris is not a member of the Oh, it says, you must have crossed the wrong, hit the wrong one.
My bad. Should I like talk in the mic or just?
You stand or?
Either my chest and my voice.
I think we're here.
Hello. My name is Christopher Nor, and I'm a senior here at Arrowhead. In regards to the comments made at the October 24th board meeting on the topics of pronouns and gendered bathrooms, I'd like to proudly stand alongside my classmates and host friends in saying that this school must and can do better, be an open and welcoming place for all kids. Regarding comments that were made about, oh, girls who think they're boys making the real boys feel uncomfortable in the bathroom, it must be said that this entire notion is simply a way to discriminate against the trans kids here at, at our school. On top of this, it is simply a non-issue. I can guarantee you that a vast majority of students just wants to use the bathroom and leave and get back to class, get back to learning. The focus here should not be on the very small portion of kids who feel, quote, uncomfortable by, by trans kids using the same bathroom as, as the, as those kids can simply use a stall or a different bathroom if, if they feel bad on trans kids, however, cannot change who they are. Instead, the focus of this should be on how to better address the blatant transphobia that gets in the way of trans kids from simply using the bathroom that makes them feel most com- com- comfortable. Now, on the topic of pronouns, again, it is yet another topic being talked about in black and white terms, us versus them. Pronouns are not, are, are not unique to some party. They're simply a way of addressing someone in a manner that makes them feel best and makes them feel welcome. And isn't that what this school should be all about? This school shouldn't be known as the transphobic school that ignores those who are harassed on a daily basis just because of who they are. But at the moment, that sadly will be more and more like the case. But I believe by putting openness and inclusion first and by meeting with and talking to trans voices, this board and the school can do much, much better. Thank you.
Thank you, Christopher. James Cross.
Thank you, Michael. Can you guys? Hello, my name is James Cross. I'm a sophomore here at Arrowhead High School. I'm here to address the topics of the, or, or need about pronouns, of the question of asking students pronouns. Which, which I believe is a display of the Arrowhead way displayed up there, be appropriate, be respectful, and be responsible. Some say that, that teachers asking their students to pronounce at the beginning of school was intrusive or make them feel uncomfortable. However, in every class this happened, which is few to, to begin with, by, by the way, although it's I've heard no comments from students themselves finding it strange. And this, and this question is, is always optional. So that's huge and optional. Comfortable to some people who, who, what their pronouns are. Not answering it, if you don't feel like it. Also, as someone with, with, with friends who are non-binary, trans, and part of the LGBTQ plus community, who told me that, about their experiences with these surveys, I can say that this question is more good than any part, that it's more people looking for something to, to be mad about than actually about. This question helps with students to identify with different pronouns, feel safer and more welcome than what is already a difficult place for LGBTQ plus students who feel included. As, as I've seen in hallways, any class people being harassed and saying words that are not I believe any discomfort with, with this question is simply from people looking for something to be mad about. And there are bigger issues that, that actually affect students learning to worry about instead of something that helps trans students feel safe. Again, this is something that will help students and teachers be appropriate and, and respectful. And I think that, that that's what Arrowhead at its core should be about, not transphobic, not homophobic, any criticism. Thank you.
My dream was to have a much larger family so I could field the full 11 on the soccer field. I, I confess, I left the last board meeting early. I was disappointed by the board's approval of Policy 333. Three, as you have heard from me, restricting, in my view, how history, questions of social justice can be taught at Arrowhead. Had I stayed, I would have heard about the two topics raised, the arguments before me and after me. I defer to the, the bathroom question, the pronoun question. But I was able to witness this courtesy of the recordings that were made available by the school. The, the language, as we've heard, that was used on the topic of bathroom usage was framed in a way that did not seem to express empathy. And when combined with an irrelevant news item from Virginia, served only to amplify transphobia in my mind, which has no place in the school or community. I do commend the other board members for reminding their colleagues of our public schools' role in providing an educational experience that is inclusive and serving the diverse needs of our students. We have enough manufactured outrage in our community and we do not need any more. The same goes for the discussion about asking students about their preferred pronouns. Again, I defer to the direct experience of my superiors who have spoken or are about to speak again. We need to respect how any individual wishes to be addressed regarding preferred pronouns. We also need to get out of the way of our education professionals who are doing their jobs and helping our kids learn. Once again, the way in which the topic was framed did not suggest empathy in my mind for our students who are educators. I must say that the comments about having the names of teachers who asked their students about their preferred pronouns, having them ready to hand in came a little too quickly on the heels of that day of my warning to the board about slipping into the car keys and, and which ones. That was, that was disturbing to see. Both Policy 333 and the framing of the bathroom and pronoun and gender items are not, they're not going to help our district out of faith that we can do better, but only we are committed to the idea that we want Arrowhead to have a positive reputation as a welcoming and inclusive educational institution. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Megan Black.
Hi, my name is Megan Black. I formerly went to Richmond growing up and I graduated at Arrowhead in 2016. I'm a little unprepared because I decided about an hour and a half ago that needed to come. I really struggled with it because I knew it would be really emotionally draining to be here for this topic of transgender students. But as someone who was a part of the LGBTQ community, it feels like my responsibility to protect those who are younger than me and help them have a better life. One thing, when I was working at Starbucks, because they have this thing called the third place. The first place is your home, the second place is work or school, and the third place is Starbucks. Not as important. So many kids at home, especially those part of the LGBT community, they don't have that support at home. They just don't. And we don't know how much they have. Very recently, I was discussing gender with my own mom. And I brought up how I was thinking about non-binary and how that might feel right for me. And her reaction was really abrupt because she didn't understand. She was really frustrated. And I told her, take two minutes to Google it. It's really simple. And she made a comment of, well, now I'll just quit my job and I'll look into it. And I'm 23. And so hearing like that, something at like my age, that really hurt. And so my 17-year-old brother who goes here, he heard that too. And so those kind of comments really stick with the children that our parents are saying this. I'd like to kind of go back to what Pastor Mary Jane had said. Doing something could mean saving one person from death. This is a perfect example of that. Trans kids are victims of suicide so much more often than anyone people are to admit. Another thing she said is that one student is worth it. There are plenty here that are worth it. But if just one student is worth it here at Arrowhead for sex trafficking, heck yeah, they're worth it for transgender stuff too. At the end of the day, they just want to use the bathroom. They just want to be comfortable. They want to learn. Everyone in this room here has pronouns. It's not like an abstract concept. It's just what makes us comfortable. I really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Lindsay Martin.
I'm Lindsay Martin, senior at Arrowhead High School. Sick of seeing my parents and family harassed and based on their sexual orientation and gender identity. Title nine of the Education Amendments of the 19, of 1972 prohibit sex discrimination in any education program, which includes the discrimination based on sexual orientation and/or gender identity. The U.S. Department of Health and Human Services states that sex discrimination includes, but it's not limited to, quote, engaging in gender-based or sexual harassment such as making unwelcome sexual comments, advances, and/or nay-calling on the basis of sex. Every day, LGBTQ plus students are called slurs and barked at by homophobic and transphobic students. And this behavior worsens when transgender students do their preferred wrestling. These bullyings have not been punished in a way that reflects the severity of their actions. Parents should be notified, suspension from school and sports should take place, and most importantly, the behavior has to stop. According to stopbullying.com, an official website of the United States government, quote, "Wisconsin schools that receive federal funding are required by federal law to address discrimination based on certain personal characteristics." Discriminatory harassment is covered under federal civil, civil rights laws that are enforced by the U.S. Department of Education and the U.S. Department of Justice. Who are obligated by law to address this situation when it meets all three of the following criteria. One, it is unwelcome and objectively offensive, such as derogatory language, intimidation, threats, physical contact, or physical violence. Two, it creates a hostile environment at school. And three, it is based on a student's race, color, national origin, sex, disability, or religion. The F slur and the T slur are derogatory slurs used to refer to gay and transgender individuals respectfully. A hostile environment is created at school when these students aren't comfortable using their preferred bathrooms or simply walking through a classroom because they are subject to harassment and these slurs. Arrowhead staff and administration is fully aware of the discrimination and harassment taking place and has not done all of their power to combat it. And it's time that they do. Thank you for your attention.
Susan Martin, Suzanne Martin.
Thank you. I'm Suzanne Martin. I have two students who are seniors here at Arrowhead and I used to work at this desk. So I'm familiar with the building. To follow up on what was just said before I get to my little comments, it is going on here daily. This is not just, oh, some kids want to use the boys' bathroom. These kids are getting harassed and bullied daily, hourly, in the hallways and in the lunchroom. So it's not just, hey, we need a policy about the bathrooms. This is going on daily and it's just completely unfair and it goes completely against what is now just a little tiny sign here in the library that used to be really big in the hallways about be respectful. Arrowhead Board Policy on Discrimination prohibits discrimination based on sexual orientation and gender, but is silent on the issue of gender identity. The law is not silent on that issue. The policy on bullying here at this school is not silent on that issue. So y'all have thought about it, but you need to change your policy to conform with what is current law. And you know what? Even if you don't change your policy, you still have to follow the law. Title nine protects students from discrimination based on sexual orientation and gender identity. The practice here has to be changed. And I am asking one of you board members tonight to bring that to the board, to change that policy on discrimination, which still has to follow the law. You can take your time on your policy. You have to follow the law in your practice. The gender-neutral bathrooms that might be proposed, that's a great start. Okay? But before those might be available, you need to make accommodations for the kids that need them. And that doesn't mean, hey, you can use the bathroom in the nurse's office or you can use the bathroom in the teacher's office. That is discrimination. You guys have a lawyer on, on retainer. It's in your budget. He can tell you, there's case law on that. That is discrimination. You need to make bathrooms available for the kids. If you need language for your board policy, you can go to the swallow school board policy. It's 2260. It's perfect. It's been lawyered to death. It's perfect. Just copy the language. You don't even have to pay a lawyer. This is not a choice these kids are making. This is their identity. It is who they are inside. And when you, I'm getting paired up. And you can't tell. When you discriminate against them and bring them down and allow every other student in this building to bring them down, you are showing them who you are inside. And it's not, this is not who we are. You gotta step back before you start saying things about these kids. You gotta step back and think of what's coming out of your mouth. You got to step back before you start saying things about these kids. You got to step back and think of what's coming out of your mouth. The four teachers, like that last meeting where, oh, I've got the names of four teachers who passed out a questionnaire. That is exactly how it is supposed to be done. Because in passing out that questionnaire, I want their names too, and I think I might owe you one of them this. But in passing out that questionnaire, that teacher was telling every kid in that room, I respect you and I respect your right to be here and I accept you. That's not something we need to shield our kids from. It's not something that they're going to have to deal with in corporate culture when they get out in the woke community and all of that. That, we need to wake up now. We need to start treating each other with respect. And you teach kids that here. You teach them at home and you teach them here. This is not how we treat each other. You can't keep letting this happen in your hallways. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Suzanne. Oliver Lee.
Everyone, everyone hear me all right?
Yes.
My name is Oliver Lee and I'm a senior here at Arrowhead. I know it should come as no surprise that I'm going to be responding to some concerns. It's brought up in the October 20th, 2021 Board of Education. I'd like to start by reading part of a poem I wrote my freshman year. Because I am a boy who looks like a girl who looks like a boy. And that kind of thing will get you in trouble around here. I'm scared to use the men's bathroom because I'm afraid of what they will do with me and because I'm afraid that I'll stick out because I don't know what to do. I'm scared to use the ladies' bathroom because I'm tired of the judgment and tired of the comments. And because when I look at myself in a mirror, I don't know who I see. I look back now, three years later, and I reflect, what has changed? What hasn't? I have come out, started living my life authentically. I don't shake when I enter the restroom and I don't flinch up the stairs. I've been challenged, told it's my lifestyle, not me, that's against someone's religion. Told, I'm confused, told even indirectly that I'm a biological girl who considers herself a boy. I don't consider myself a boy. I am a boy. I've always been a boy and it's not my fault. People thought I was a girl. I felt indignation for myself, for my trans siblings who walk the halls, some loud, some hidden, for the regression that has been suggested, for the idea that trans and non-binary students should be shoved into the corner, into the background, into our two gender-neutral bathrooms on the opposite side of the school, out of sight, out of mind. Or worse, back into the bathrooms corresponding with our biological sex, not mining the physical and mental torment that it brings, the shame, the discomfort, the feeling of a vice squeezing your heart. I find it ironic that the very issues that brought up this topic are the same ones that my peers and I have faced for years. Unable to use the restroom all day due to fear. I and my transgender peers had to physically trade ourselves throughout to never have to use the bathroom throughout school hours, subsequently de-hydrate ourselves, medically unsafe, as you said. Feels like people are staring at you. Feeling exposed. Use assault. That's what I do. That's what every trans person does. That's what they're there for. Can't find a safe restroom? Do you know how many gender-neutral bathrooms there are total at Arrowhead? I can think of four. Meanwhile, there's men's and women's rooms down every hall. Now, I don't want anyone here to feel attacked. I don't mean to push a you versus us rhetoric. But to speak candidly, it feels like it when this issue is brought up all the time and precedence wins all the time. But this debate on what guidelines transgender people are graciously permitted to live by is deeply impacted. Even if this doesn't pass, or even if it does, what has been said cannot be taken back. One may be able to walk away from this meeting, have a good night's rest, and it's out of mind by the morning. But LGBTQ students will be waking up to the fact that the school board, sworn in to ensure the protection of their students so that they may grow with tender love and care and be ready for the world outside, was just debating whether they are deserving of this protection or should be cast aside to where they cannot be seen for the next four years. And this will weigh on their minds for as long as they walk these halls. At risk of speaking for my fellow students, I would say how they feel is how I feel tonight, alone. I'm scared, angry, betrayed, and exhausted. The worst part is, I'm not sure any of us are surprised. So please, surprise me.
Thank you, Autumn. Camden Schwartz.
Can everybody hear me okay? Can you hear me? Okay. Hello, my name is Camden Schwartz and I am a senior here at Arrowhead High School. Pardon me for reading off my phone here. It's just my nuts that I prepared. I just had a comment for our school board team. Shame on the school board for using its classroom to form an agenda regarding an issue that was previously known. I hope that you know that your statements regarding preferred pronouns of our students was ignorant and quite frankly, unnecessary. As it hurts nobody for a student to feel respected. People in blatantly disrespectful viewpoints that are commonplace in this high school are the reason why I am not proud to be in Arrowhead Board. My question here for the school board is, are you representing Arrowhead?
Thank you, Camden. Autumn Treble.
Hello, can everyone hear me? As I'm sure a lot of you can, but I am here to discuss concerns I had with the October 20th meeting. My name is Autumn Treble. I was one of the students last year who wrote the school board the advocacy letter for gender-neutral bathrooms. However, when I had this intention, I by no means wanted them to be a mandatory for any students as was proposed as a solution for the problem discussed on the October 20th meeting. Currently, the gender-neutral bathrooms are very, very out of the way for students and just for students who wanted them, who felt more comfortable with them. I wanted them more accessible for students. But to have anyone have to use them, I don't think is right. And especially right now, when I am in my journalism class and if I had to use the gender-neutral bathroom, I would have to walk the entire way across the school and likely miss almost half of my class. And I don't want that for any of my friends. And then on the pronoun issue as well. I, I was born a female. I identify as a female. I use she/her pronouns. I use the female bathrooms. I've never once felt uncomfortable with the surveys that my teachers have given me. And I have enjoyed the fact that they respected all of us students enough to just add it on there. And with the possible solution proposed of doing it on a case-by-case basis, I think is also, for fear of sounding rude, a very, very bad solution because then teachers are handpicking students based on how they look and how they seem and just making assumptions based on that. And I don't think any of these kinds of solutions are the kinds of solutions that we need to the problems. And instead, I think the solutions that my friends and other concerned parties who have spoken already, those solutions have seemed much more inclusive and ready for all students to be respectful of everyone involved. Because even though they are the minority, any any transgender students or non-binary students, they are still students here and they matter so much to all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Autumn. Julia. I'm sure about last name.
It's Polish, by the way. The J is silent. It's wonderful. I love it. You pronounce it because now I really want to hear it. Yeah, it's Julia Sadowitz. Yeah, I currently have a sister here who's a senior, Abby. So if you see her, J is silent. So, um, but yes, as you can assume, I am actually an alumni from this school. I'm sure you've heard plenty from students and parents who are concerned about the comments made by the board in regards to the comments with the bathrooms and the pronouns. I obviously am passionate enough to have come to this meeting today, but I'm going to take this in a more factual and an approach that you guys will understand as professionals in the workplace and just leaving this school because obviously this is not just a school issue. This is going to be an issue that you are going to be seeing throughout your entire life. I know people who are in several different types of fields. I work with people. And I volunteer with people who put pronouns in their email signatures, who are on Zoom calls and add pronouns to their name. I know people who ask this as a professional courtesy when they go to lectures or speakers just so they understand that they are seen and they can feel like they are actually being addressed as a person and not as an assumption. In the beginning of a school year, teachers will go through their list of students and they will ask, if you have a preferred name you would like to be called, let me know how that goes and how you would like it to be spelled so I can call you that for the rest of the year. What is that any different from what somebody might want to be called? Because we mainly call people by pronouns, not by their first name. I actually have a lot of teachers in my family. A lot of my cousins on my mother's side are teachers. And I talked to one of my cousins earlier today. And that is one of the main things that she brings up with her classes in the beginning of each year. What do you like to be called with your name, with your pronouns? And she is a teacher that teaches students coming from outside the country and trying to teach them English. So if they can understand pronouns and try and understand English in an English-speaking school, I don't think it should be that complicated for all of us, not just the people here to understand and try and include in our everyday lives. So obviously, it's important inside the school to make the students feel comfortable, but it also prepares them for the workforce like I stated earlier. And it just starts a conversation that we don't, as people, as evolving individuals, we don't assume somebody based on how they look, how they interact with people. And it starts a conversation with them, even to just say, who are you? You know, not just say, you are there. And high school is really meant to just keep kids in an environment where they're learning, not just about the curriculum, but about themselves. Everybody in high school always looks back at, wow, look at who I used to be. And that's not a bad transition, even if they had a quote-unquote cringey high school experience. I actually did a little bit of research and there is a website called the Educator's Playbook, which is from the University of Pennsylvania's Grad School of Education. And they have a fantastic article on this if you'd like to look into it. And it's about the topic of education and pronouns in the classroom. And one of the things that they point out on their website is the fact that putting out a survey for students to fill out in the privacy of their own workspace is actually a better form than asking them in a public setting or having the student go up to them individually. Because even as somebody who identifies as the gender that they were assigned at birth, I don't, I feel included when somebody asks and just makes me feel like, yeah, you care if I do identify as something different. And just, it makes the students feel welcome. Like I said, that would be the same thing for me every time that happens. I personally don't care when somebody asks, but other people might care extremely. That's why it's important to just ask everybody and not assume. And it is a good role model for students to have that situation where they have people who they look up to, who teach them who to be and what to learn, that they are taking that into account and being better students or better members of the community for their students. And it's, it's not too hard to do. I definitely have had to learn as somebody in this community from what I used to know to what I know now. And I would appreciate if everybody here could just take that into consideration and just take it as a passionate and also factually relevant topic to consider in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Julia. Jim Evers, I believe.
Tim.
Jim.
Tim and Steve.
Okay. Maybe I missed perhaps.
Yeah, so I actually changed what I was going to talk about tonight. Really, because I was, I've been truly inspired by, I think, every speaker that has spoken so far tonight. Started off with a guest speaker and it's continued to follow. So thank you for all the speakers. So I don't have a student here. Kind of seeing, listening and hearing some of the speakers tonight. It's been nervous to have a student here, quite honestly. My son, who is a seventh grader at North Shore at Heartland, I think is experiencing some of the same things, but only as a just as a seven, seventh grade boy who is starting to see some of the same things that are happening here or happening at North Shore as well. It's one of the things that I talked to him about and helped him understand because I'm learning as well. I went to high school in the 90s and I think at that time only had two ways to bully each other. That was name-calling and maybe a fist. So it's completely different and I have empathy for that. So going back a couple of board meetings ago, I think, maybe the July board meeting or August board meeting. We were on a, on a topic and there was another student speaker that came in and spoke and really presented some issues around bullying. I had the opportunity to come up and talk after that student. And I suggested to the board that we really need to get to a grassroots level anti-bullying, anti-bullying policy. Really, what I mean by grassroots level is have parents, have board members, have administration, have students, have former students really be a part of this because the, take aside the issues or maybe some of the root issues that were talked about tonight. I think there's a deeper issue of bullying you need to address. Every, every individual should be able to have their own personal freedoms to be able to be who they are, be who they want to be, be more than what they currently are because everyone can aspire to be, aspire to be anything. So I want to bring that back up again. I think we need a grassroots, grassroots level thought on how to combat bullying. I think I saw or heard about a fight maybe in the cafeteria today too, that rooted today from some level of bullying that took place. So we've really got to take this seriously. And then maybe at the other issue at hand with bathrooms and whatnot, we also have to look at it from, we can't solve one problem or a specific problem and create two others. So again, really have to think beyond what maybe the current request is and really think a little deeper. And again, and I'll go back to my, my seventh grader at Heartland North. I think there's still even a lot of students, there's parents, I'll admit to it. I am not educated. I say educated is the right enough word to be able to, to speak with the right words, not intentionally insult someone because I really love to make sure that everyone's able to be themselves. But there's got to be some students in here who may not understand and be able to say the right things. Even there, we have some more educating to do of our, of our students. I've got education to do with my own kids, but the one thing that I want to fundamentally teach is teach every, or teach everyone to treat them as your friend. My son asks me a lot of times how he should handle a certain situation in his own school with a certain individual in the school. I just say, be their friend. Absolutely first, be their friend. So that is probably all I'm going to talk about tonight. But again, please take my request seriously. I think we're grassroots anti-bullying team. Happy to be a part of it. I would encourage other parents, students, prior students to be a part of that as well. We've got to get this solved. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Noah Droid. That's all right. Both.
I don't have much to say because I'm tired of fighting for my existence. Every day I need to deal with ignorance and harassment and it's becoming draining. Becoming myself was not an easy road, yet people act like I took this road on purpose. It is not a choice to be trans, therefore it should not be a choice to deny me from going into the right bathroom. I should not have to fight for my rights to be. The ignorant and transphobic comments from the October 20th school board meeting should have consequences. It's scary enough to deal with the harassment in the school that is not being dealt with, let alone know some of the people running the school are just as hateful and uneducated. Your people are a legally protected group and the ideas this school board had about bathrooms and pronouns were not legal and very discriminatory. And some of you were unaware of the laws and made a document of both the federal laws and Arrowhead policies about my protected rights and the school's discrimination policies. I will be emailing it to the school board members and Arrowhead administrators. And ask all school board members to please educate yourselves on not only these laws and policies, but also what trans people already have to deal with. That's all I'm going to say.
Is there anyone else who hasn't signed up for a chair of speech? Do you have your name, please?
My name is Jennifer LaChapelle. I'd like to just start off by saying I'm not binary and I use she-er and then pronouns. I graduated Arrowhead year 2016. I was captain of the robotics team my time here. I was part of the marching band, part of GSA. So a lot of things, but I wanted to come here tonight. I don't have any other ties here. I don't know anyone here currently. But I want to come here tonight and kind of talk about how I feel this community kind of failed me. And a lot of that is doing part to, you know, the pronoun thing and LGBTQ issues that have been talked about already. So, I came up to my parents, my family, when I was in eighth grade, that I was gay, that I liked all people, basically. And it wasn't until my junior year of high school that I had a girlfriend. So during this time, I was captain of the robotics team. She was also on the robotics team. And we kept it a secret for a while, as long as we could. But a short while later, started getting comments, a lot of which were actually from the parents, from the mentors, reminding us not to show any public displays of affection. Meanwhile, there are straight couples, holding hands, sitting on each other's laps, doing all that stuff right in front of us. And they're telling me I can't even like look at her in, you know, any kind of way. So that was something that just really stuck with me. We wouldn't hold hands around town, at school, anywhere, really. That was, that was really just difficult. I was part of the GSA here. There was only like 10 members or so. And about half of them were allies, which after graduating high school, moving away to college, they all came out of the closet. Amongst, you know, like 20 other people in my graduating class, at least, that's just who I know of. But I, like them, couldn't get out of this town fast enough. I went to Minnesota. I went all over the place, but I went to Minnesota and in college there, they let you use whatever pronouns you want. They let you do whatever you want. You're a real person there. So that was a nice change of pace. But regarding pronouns and bathrooms, one thing that I've spoken about before, when I've done things like this is if any of you guys have a pet, like a dog, you take your dog, dog park, and it's another dog, and you say, wow, that's a great dog. He's really cute. What's her name? And the other person goes, oh, his name is Marco. It's that easy to correct the pronoun. And people will do it for their pets. Why can't we do it for one another, for members of the community, for our friends and family? I'll tell an embarrassing story real quick that relates to that. I went golfing with my mom a couple of months ago. We were wearing the masks and it was like evening and a really nice golf course. We get up to the counter to pay and we're expecting it to be like 60 bucks for the two of us. So the young lady behind the counter goes, that'll be $40. We're like, 40? Like each or total? She says, total. She pointed, my mom said, it's twilight, it's evening, so you give the twilight fee. And she points to me and she goes, and he gets the junior rate. So my mom goes, um, she, but I still took junior rate. It's only $10. But regarding pronouns, just because some of you guys may not like it, may not agree with it, isn't going to change us. It's not going to make us go away. It's going to stick with us, but it does no good, really, to anybody. As far as bathrooms, there's basically three options for that. If you guys were to not allow students to use the bathroom they choose, one is you guys get slapped with a lawsuit, which would really suck for everyone. The second one, which someone already mentioned, is they're going to hold it all day long. Towards the end of the day, when they really got to go, that's all they're going to be thinking about. They're not going to pay attention in class. They're not going to pay attention to anything else going on. They're going to want to get home, go to the bathroom, which at home, you all have gender-neutral bathrooms. The third option is they're going to use the bathroom that you guys perceive them to be able to use. And they're going to get upset about it. They're going to go home and internalize it. They're going to become depressed. They're going to possibly hurt themselves or even worse. That's an experience I know too well. And for it to happen to any other people, I think would be tragic. So I think that's about everything I have to say. Thank you, guys, for listening, everyone. And thank you for everyone else who spoke.
Anybody else?
Just say your name, please.
Hi, I'm David. I don't really have much prepared. But I just want to give a bit of a different perspective on the whole pronouns issue. So over the summer, I've had the opportunity to work at four different workplaces. And, you know, they vary drastically. But the only thing, the only thing that they had in common is that by the first day, they already asked me for what my pronouns were. Their application form, the onboarding form, something like that. Every single one of those already wanted to know what my pronouns were. And, you know, that's not, that's not really where in the workplace. They want to know, hey, how do we address you? How do we interact with you? What do we call you when we're talking to you? And I don't think that's really a radical idea. So if we're saying that our kids are single, you're fifth, not mine. If you're saying that they're going to be confused about the whole idea of having pronouns, about having a he/her, you know, or sorry, he/him, she/her, they/them, that's going to come up in the future. It's not like it's going to go away after they're done with high school. So if they're going to be introduced that in any point of their life, it's, why not here, right? Because this is a school, this is very good educated. So if they're going to learn about it sometime, which they are, why not have it up? And that's all I want to say.
Thank you, David. I believe I saw another hand in the back there. Yes. Your name, please?
My name is Alex Yu. I use he/him pronouns. I wasn't originally going to talk, because truth be told, I'm terrified and I feel like I'm about to pass out. So if this is an awful ramble, I really apologize. And to be honest, I don't really know what to say either. I think that it's disgusting that me and my friends have to deal with all of this harassment. And there's absolutely nothing being done about it. I should not have to see my friends cry in the hallway because they get called a slur. I should not have to do that. Other people have to do that? No. Other people don't even have slurs to get called. Sorry. I shouldn't have to, like, if I'm holding hands with one of my friends in the hallway, even if there's nothing going on between the two of us, we shouldn't have to let go if we walk back, if we walk past a certain person, because we know that they're going to do something to us. That shouldn't happen. Even if there's nothing going on between the two of us, we shouldn't have to just let go and just stop like acting friendly with each other, just because we're afraid. We shouldn't have to be afraid. And it's disgusting that we are afraid. I came to Arrowhead because I thought it would be a better environment than the previous school that I went to. And honestly, it's worse. It's so much worse. If I had the option to transfer back to the school that I came from, I would. But I have friends here now that I care about. I care about them so much that I'm going to stay here for them. I don't care about harassment towards me. I care about the harassment towards them. That is what matters to me. And it is disgusting that nothing is being done to solve that. We are the students here and we deserve to be protected and you are the people that should be protecting us. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Anyone else? Yes.
Hi. My name's Prius Bergman. I have an intense fear of public speaking. It's taken me a long time to get to this spot. So I hope you appreciate that and ignore any mic shaking. It's not a lot. So I'm senior currently. Honestly, I just wanted to say that I'm really outraged that the school board would throw its own teachers under the bus. They're the teachers that inspire students to speak up. But I'm here. I'm here right now, because I feel that it's my duty to speak up for my friends, my peers and my community, even though I'm obviously breathing a lot and shaking a lot and it's really scary for me. You guys have
We don't bite.
You guys have a duty to support your teachers and your faculty members as much as your students. I'm incredibly upset that such teachers that filled up their students are being thrown to the side by people who claim to support them. I find that the educators I've had at this school, who have been most inclusive to me, have made me who I am. And I wouldn't have been standing here today without them. So I just want you to take that into account, that the inclusive teachers are the ones that really build up students. And I'm standing here only because of them. So please don't throw them under the bus again.
Thank you, Prius. Anybody else? Yes. Your name, please?
Addie.
Hi, Addie.
So, a while ago, I moved from the state of Florida to here, to Arrowhead High School. Or, well, I originally started at North Shore Middle School and then I go to Arrowhead High School. And I got to just say, it's been really hard seeing all my friends have to suffer with all the harassment that's been going on. And at school events, there's been lots of harassment going on, first me and other people. I just hope that one day, we won't have to deal with that anymore. Addie. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Or anybody else?
My name is Ty Javier and I'm a junior here at Arrowhead. I'm going to be speaking from the perspective of a bystander here. On the announcement of the words that were said at the board meeting that Arrowhead is referencing, some students, like myself, were caught off-guard by the comments that we made and others felt very differently. And it came to no shock to me to hear the hate begin to spew "school that is praised for its academics and athletics lacks human decency." A friend who said of the student body, "Don't treat the members of the LGBT community with respect or decency." Some of those parts refer to them as "it" instead of "they" or "them" or their other preferred pronouns. These students firmly believe that trans and gay people are not in fact people. They believe that they are others. This is not only dangerous, but it is un-American. Words that I've heard have alienated them. They're cast away from this school and they are treated like no person should be. Trans people are four times as likely to develop mental health conditions than you or me. This behavior is not acceptable at Arrowhead and should not be perpetuated by this board. Thank you. Yes.
My name is Mitchell Matthews and I'm a member of the LGBT community. And I would like to talk on my Arrowhead experience. So, starting my junior year to now, I have experienced plenty of harassment from my sexuality and who I identify as. And I find that frankly unacceptable. And I find it unacceptable that the teachers who I felt included by, such as the ones who have asked for pronouns, have been have been pointed out by the committee because of their inclusiveness. And I feel that if I go to school and my teachers cannot ask who I am or ask about me, I feel frankly, I can't feel safe at school at all. As well as that, I have received harassment from my sexuality. I've been called a slur many times in the hallway, in my classrooms, by people who I once considered my friends. And I find that Arrowhead often encourages this behavior. And I find that this is enraging, this is upsetting. I can't go to school and feel safe. And if I can't go to school and feel safe, how am I expected to go into the workforce and feel safe for the rest of my life and feel safe? And just knowing that I'm not the only one that experiences this is frankly upsetting. And the fact that this is not normal, it's not normal behavior. And I feel like if I'm not accepted at my school and I can't go into the workforce and have a similar experience, I feel like that is, or excuse me, if I can't go to school and have a similar experience as college workforce, I feel like I feel like I can't feel safe at all. Point being, I want to feel safe. I want to feel accepted and I don't feel like that.
Thank you, that's all. Yes.
Hi, I wasn't planning on coming here tonight.
Name, your name, please?
My name is Jackie Huddy. I'm really glad I did though, so sorry, I don't look the most professional. I came out in sixth grade. And ever since I came out, I've been discriminated against. One of my friends outed me and my mom. First thing she said to me was, well, that's why people don't want to sleep over. And when I came to Arrowhead, it was nice having And when I came to Arrowhead, it was nice having counselors who were special in LGBTQ, like, just made me feel included, like Mr. Figer and Mr. Masby. But it's honestly kind of a seven face when you have two, like, really good support systems, but you also have people who are the opposite side of the spectrum. And it's not just gay people who are being discriminated, it's race, gender, whatever. It really just needs to stop. And it's just scary to see, like, the same arguments over and over again about whether people should have rights to go to the bathroom, or where people should have equal rights. And I think it's pretty important that we educate our students here about how to treat people who they may perceive as different just because of how they identify. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Anybody else? Yes, sir? I'm sorry. Yeah, I recognize that, I apologize.
My name is Laura Fresh, and I am trying to echo what a lot of the other speakers said, that I was not planning on speaking tonight. But I feel inspired by these courageous, beautiful, intelligent, wonderful young adults that have spoken here earlier. And I feel, as a mother, collectively, all children are my kids, and I'm speaking out for them. I don't believe that we choose our sexual or, you know, identity or orientation. We don't just decide what we wanna be. We are what we are. And that's just how it is. We never question a straight person, "Well, why are you straight?" So why should it be any different from anyone else that is not straight? I'm losing my track of thought, so there is that, but Arrowhead is known for many things. Tolerance. Tolerance is not one of them. It's a known thing. And I went to school and graduated in 1992, and sadly, I feel like I can say graduating in 92, it was way more progressive than it is now. It feels like it's gone back quite a ways, and that shouldn't be the case. As a society, we're supposed to learn from our mistakes in the past and do better. And it's just not happening. School is supposed to be a place where children feel safe, where they feel like they don't have to worry, where they can be who they are. And if they can't feel good here, then what good is it being here? I always go back to what my father always taught me from child on. Treat others the way you wish to be treated. So, when you're treating others a certain way, you need to stop and think, "Is that the way I wanna be treated?" And if the answer is no, then obviously, something's going on that's not right. I have so many more things I could say, and my mind is a blank, so I'll probably be up all night stressing what I could've said, but I'm just, I'm sad. As a community, we can do better. Oh, and as far as the teachers, any teacher I've ever had that I can remember that has made a difference in my life are the ones that actually cared about me. I wasn't just a number, I wasn't just somebody walking through the door. And it wasn't just about whatever subject I was in, math, English, whatever. They cared about me as a person, as a human being, not just what the subject was. And I applaud those teachers for doing what they did. And wow, if I was a teacher, I would've walked out, because that's awful to do that to them. That's just awful, to put them in the spotlight and all that. That's not necessary. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Yes?
My name is Lauren, I use Native Pronouns. I was not originally planning on speaking. However, I had two things I wanted to point out. One was that at the last meeting, there was a talk about corporate America and how this circle will be supported there. You know what else won't be supported in corporate America? Calling people slurs and barking at them. It will make you look like an idiot, and you will probably just get fired from your job. You choose us as the people to silence and not our oppressors. Also, I'd like to point out the fact that most of us who came to speak today are all on the same side. The same side of the people who actually care about the issue. The other people, the stupid kids who are sending in letters complaining about how they can't use the bathroom, it's, they don't even hear it. If they really, if they were really bothered, they'd show up tonight. But we're the people who showed up tonight, because this is our lives, and it affects us way more than it affects them. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Rachel. I was not originally planning on speaking like a lot of other people, but I feel so, whenever I can't talk to people that I used to be friends with because of who I am and who I, like, present myself as now, isn't fair. And my friends face it too. I know a lot of people who do not get to have experiences that they wished they could've had because of the hatred that they face every day. And it just, it's getting really annoying to me that a lot of people can't do what they love because of how other people treat them and how they're affected by that. That's kind of annoying.
Thank you, Rachel. Anyone else? Oh, I'm sorry, just your head.
My name is MJ. I'm an active member in my GSA, Gay Straight Alliance, and I seek to educate people at my school on LGBT topics. My only point of standing up here is to educate. This is a place of academia, and a lack of knowledge and faculty is assigned to fulfilling academic institution. If you wish to learn more about what I'm about to say, please contact the Arrowhead GSA. Being trans is not new. There's evidence of trans people and gender non equality since the common era, or before the common era even. Changing our language for others is also not new. The term "mis" was brought about in 20th century by feminists who wished to not be defined by their marital status. And now, personal Native pronouns are being used by people who wish to not be seen as a binary gender. Cisgender, I repeat, cisgender is the term you use to describe people who are not transgender and aligned with the gender they were assigned at birth. They are not biological boys or girls. Transgender is a term you use to describe students who do not align with the gender they were assigned at birth. They are not girls who think they are boys. There are many types of boys. Some are tall, some are short, some are loud, some are quiet, some are smart, and some are funny. Some are cisgender and some are transgender, but they are all boys.
Do it next. Anybody else? I think there's one. Absolutely.
There's a statistic that goes around that the average lifespan of a trans person is 30 years old. In reality, don't know what's the lifespan of an average trans person is because many trans people don't feel safe enough to disclose that information to their medical providers. Adding onto that, in 2020, according to Forbes.com, 50% of all transgender and non-binary people in the US seriously contemplated killing themselves in 2020. In 2020, I went to Rogers, Alcoy, mental health. Health. Yeah. That saved my life. And if I did not have Rogers and the resources that I have now, I would not be standing in front of you to tell you about the 50% of us that think about these thoughts every day. While I cannot say that I received was the sole cause of sending me there, I'm saying with conviction that it was one of them. It is a proven fact that using trans and non-binary people's correct names and pronouns reduces the odds of suicide. And if anyone wants to tell me that I should not have gone to Rogers, and I should not have gotten the resources that saved my life, then I feel like that is the same as telling me that they do not want to use my pronouns or my name. Because in the end, the result is the same. And I don't want this to be a religious argument or a political argument. I want you to save our kids. I want you to save me.
Anybody else?
I just wanna thank everyone that's still been here. Like I said, I'm 23, graduated in 2016. And hearing all of these students, and the parents, and the teachers, who feel so strongly about this is so important. And I feel very lucky, I had a great high school experience. I was in a straight relationship, I was out as bisexual, I didn't feel comfortable telling a lot of people, but I was lucky because I have that privilege. And so hearing all of these students today, and how important it is to them, and their friends who are on their side, and the parents and everyone, is almost heartbreaking. And these kids who aren't even 18 yet have to defend themselves, and deserve, they don't have the respect they deserve. And so I really hope you guys take every single one of these stories into account and really think about it. Because no kid, no student, no parent, or anyone should have to sit here and tell everyone to respect someone else for something that's out of their control. So thank you for your guys' time, I really hope you can take all this.
Thank you. Anybody else? Everybody in the audience? Anybody else that speaks? Thank you very much. I'll make some comments after.
I just wanted to say to each and every one of you how much I appreciate what you had to say. I really heard what you said, I take it to heart, and I feel so sad about some of the stories you had to say. The issue I brought to the table was from other parents who were complaining that their sons in a bathroom were being exposed from another girl coming in. So we have to take that into consideration too. There's two sides to every story, so I'm representing that. But I still appreciate what you have to say. I think it even goes beyond the bathroom issue with the bullying and things like that. That's more important than even the bathroom stuff. We have to make every student here feel comfortable. And every other year, we have a survey that goes out, and we always find that 25% of students here feel uncomfortable or don't feel like they belong. And that concerns me greatly, and I'm sad to see people leaving while talking, but it does concern me. So I appreciate what you had to say, and we'll take it to heart.
It's too bad that they've all left. I was wondering if Adam can share a little bit about the anti-bullying campaign that we talked about earlier this year, the 800 number, it's but thank you. I would like to say that I appreciate everybody else here. I think this probably was the most important and enlightening discussion we've had at a board level.
Fuck your two sides of the story.
And yours. The comments I heard are very disturbing. Believe you were taking it to heart. I've been very near on the topic. I went to the, at that same October 28th in-service, there was a breakout session presented by PSA students, and it was very enlightening. I learned a lot. I felt like I felt like I had a lot more to learn, okay? I was very disturbed by the fact that we're hearing a lot of bullying of these students. That's not acceptable. Not acceptable for any student at school to be bullied, or any other school. I promise you, we're gonna look into this, we're gonna get to the bottom of it. We're having a special school board meeting on December 1st with an attorney to talk to, educate the board about what's legal, what we can and can't do, or how things we can do there, the legality of doing things, et cetera. I assure you, we will have some sessions to educate both the board and the staff and the faculty on these topics as much as needed, that's long overdue. Unfortunately, for many years that I've been on the board, I have not heard of these issues. And I agree, this is not something this is not something that happened overnight. So I think some of the comments that were made at the last meeting help bring this to the forefront. And in that regard, I'm glad that that happened. But we will continue to look into this, and we will get, we will definitely get more educated, who will help with the situation, because it's not tolerable. It doesn't go along with our, with our Arrowhead way. Appropriate, respectful, and responsible. And we will go forth.
Just really quick, I also feel like there should possibly, hopefully, maybe, to help educate parents or students, maybe have a speaker come in and have it open to parents coming in and learning and hearing from you guys. Because a lot of parents aren't educated, don't know everything. So it's learning, like, new things, it's a learning experience for everybody. And we all have to respect each other, and it goes a long way when I think there is an open forum of learning, of being educated and respect being built, is, I think, a huge thing that needs to happen. Because everyone deserves an education, everyone deserves to be happy and respected. And whatever you choose, it's on you and nobody else. It's your choice. That's how it should be. And I think maybe coming up with something that would help educate parents, families, students is a great thing.
Great idea. Now I'll applaud every student that spoke. I mean, it's a tremendous amount of courage to come forward and talk to the board and the public. And I applied it for that. Please pass on to your classmates. Thank you. Yes? Now, it's been up three times now to you guys. Tim's brought it up twice, I brought it up at the annual meeting, Lovegrass, what's bullying? And now it's cricket still.
It won't be later, so.
Thank you. I'm asking one of you board members tonight to make a motion. Thank you. I'm asking one of you board members tonight to make a motion.
That's coming, sir.
Thank you, to set up a grassroots bullying program at this school. To put it on the agenda for December or January. I mean, we've been, we've been talking about it for how many meetings now? When was the first time you brought it up? I brought up the annual meeting. I thought, Derek, you talked about it. It's time. It shouldn't, it shouldn't get this far. I hear about this constantly, every day. Kids come into my store and they tell me the hell they go through. And it's, it's not just their community. It's, it's a lot of different kids. It's gotta add.
Well, the parents of these children, I mean, I don't know. Doesn't it start there in the home, like teaching respect and maybe we need fair education.
Like I was talking to Derek, you guys, one and done. I don't give a shit if it's the captain, quarterback, starting quarterback of Arrowhead, pulls this kind of crap. He's off the goddamn team. Who cares about state? Care about the kids? Other trophy does nothing in these cases. Like she said, you save one life. It's more important than a trophy, guys. Thank you, Kim, for doing this.
I just wanted to comment that our administrative team, we're already in the process. So we're gathering data from students. We want to make informed choices with data. So it's, it's underway. Good.
But, but. What, what are we gonna wait? You know, like.
Well, but I would also comment, I love the passion and the care. And there's nothing that would stop a community member from starting a grassroots movement either. Because the school has one component of a child's life. Parents are the first and most important teachers.
What you said at the one meeting, that as far as cyberbullying, if it's, you know, bullying outside of school, you guys have no jurisdiction over helping. But that's why if we started grassroots, it can branch off.
Right. So I think it should be a very joint effort. It's not just a school issue. It's a parent issue. It's a community issue.
I'm talking about what's happening. I hear daily in the school, I mean, the fight that happened today. Yeah, yesterday. You know, and I mean, fights happen.
Good to comment on the administration. That, that's great. But I, we heard from a couple of months ago, a student came in that graduated. I had to get a good year, but it was four to five years ago she graduated. And so she personally brought it up to the administration about bullying. So I was, we were chatting during one of the conversations and my next vacation day off of work or the next day that I don't have to work, I want to come sit in the hallways. I don't want to see it. And when I see it, I'm gonna do something about it. This is ridiculous. So if you see me in the hallway, say hi.
I just want to say that, like, don't discredit any of the things that the people who left said. They just left because they were really tired of being ignored multiple, on multiple occasions. And it's gotten to a point where they don't feel like talking anymore. They don't feel like having a dialogue with people who aren't gonna listen to them anymore. I still want to have a dialogue. The people here still want to have a dialogue. We're willing to have a dialogue, as long as you do the same for us. Yeah. Thank you.
The reason they left is not because they, they all came to be bad, make them, make you guys understand what they're going through. But if you misgender them, the many who are they're not, they just talked for two hours about how misgendering them and not even their correct name and pronouns. It, it drives, it causes mental health issues in trans people and LGBT people. And then when, when you do that and the second you like try to respond, it just, you, you have no respect. You didn't listen to them. And you're, you're not even considering what they're saying, which is why, which is why they left. And I'm not saying, obviously, like, a lot of us here are still here and we want, we want to, like, we want to have a dialogue. But you also need to consider, like, actually listen and respect and just think about what they're saying.
I, I totally agree with what they're saying, but I would like to bring up Laura, what you were saying earlier about interviewing or not interviewing, what was the term you used? Well, we're collecting data that we already have because we keep track of every report of bullying and harassment. So we're collecting that for trends. And then we've just interviewed students about delving deeper into, so have you felt bullied while at school? And like, explain more based on what? Um, I guess the term I was looking for is survey. Um, it is statistically proven that when you do survey individuals, especially on topics that can be controversial, especially in a setting like this where if you possibly speak out against bullying or harassment that you're getting, you might get more bullying and harassment coming your way. Some of that data might not be as accurate as you might hope that it would be. And I really hope you take that into consideration when looking into these accounts. I mean, some of these students, if they feel pressured from their peers while taking some of these surveys, they might not answer as fully and as accurately as they would like. And I really hope you take into consideration not just the school itself, but some of the national data, some of the, even just statistics from just the state in itself. And even if we can find any within the county, not just Arrowhead specific. Because things that you might not find on your data might still be an issue that are coming up, not just in the school, but in other schools. And data is always subjective, obviously, but just make sure to keep into account the very vocal people everywhere, especially the, the types of students that are constantly getting that harassment. And I just feel like definitely some of those statistics should, could be a little bit biased, but just that a lot.
Yeah, I think you're right.
If I could just say one other common problem that I can add here, when you started out as a freshman in the conversation. So as a, as a parent of a son and a daughter, quite honest, I acknowledge about that. And I hope I make the right decisions. But what we want to get across was, as kids grown up, credit to each other. I can trust what Mike is doing. I can't trust what other people's feelings hurt. So if you think about that in a way that if we, if we don't solve this problem the right way, and let's just say about that bathroom issue, there are going to be kids that take advantage of that. So I know it was done in this case. I hope it was done in a genuine, in a genuine approach. But it may not be done in a genuine approach the next time. And it's someone who's gonna take advantage of someone of the opposite sex or maybe same sex in that same bathroom. So if I think about my son, my daughter, and, and they are in high school, I want to make sure that we solve the problem. We solve it so that it's a good situation for everyone. And, and not just overreact to the, the way it was brought up or the way it was talked about today or excuse me, a month ago. That is still something that we have to solve, so. Yeah, so there, there would be people taking advantage of it. If you help the other fight, I hope I can stick across, I didn't think about it earlier before I said it, but we'll just be smarter about how we solve it.
Like the same kid who's gonna be comfortable bullying, would they also be stupid enough to be comfortable being like, oh, I come in somebody's bathroom? You know, it's like being safe for everybody, making sure that the rules around it and the expectation sets a precedent, that it's not a joke. You need to still be respectful.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you. Because the last thing we wanted is someone to, and I don't mean disrespect by this, but identify one way to go take advantage of the person who just walked in the bathroom.
And not.
Yeah. Yes.
You speak up a little more, Ked, hard to hear you.
Okay, can you hear me better now?
Yeah.
Okay, so I also think that collecting the evidence on certain things might be very inaccurate to some extent. Um, I know personally, I have experienced things at school that I have not reported. To cite a specific example, I've had my butt grabbed at school more than once in the hallway. Um, but I didn't know how to report that. I didn't see who did it. Yeah, it was a really difficult situation, but I felt like the school didn't provide me enough ways to report that, even though I feel like I should. And I also don't feel comfortable not sharing that in a survey. But I feel right now on the topic of harassment and bullying, that it should be shared. But I want to say, I think that those surveys can be inaccurate because some of them take our information as students. And even though it's anonymous, we do in a classroom at school. So people around you can sometimes see the answers you're putting. So it feels uncomfortable to put things that have actually happened on there and hear that other students might see it and judge you for it or hitting you for it in the way that you don't desire necessarily. So I think that collecting data from those surveys might not necessarily be the most accurate way of telling a group how they're at school. And also I think that there needs to be more of this, the local outside posters that say, say hello on the wall. And one time we hear some students that this is a specific way that they can contact the state or school about harassing that they're not. Um, I just wanted to say thank you to all the friends here. The other day at the dinner table, I told my parents I was going to the school board meeting and they're like, why are you going? And I was like, well, I have friends that are transgender and I just want to be there to support them. And they were confused as to like what transgender meant and like how it affected them and how it changed them as people. And how like they experienced life differently from like themselves. And the fact that they're just willing to learn like means so much to us. So like, I just want to say thank you. Because like, that made me emotional to know that my parents are willing to learn from me. Because a lot of the time, young people are told that they should only learn from adults and that they don't know anything about the world. When really, we're the ones who are experiencing the new progressive world, like on a day-to-day basis in the school. So I really appreciate you guys. So thank you guys for coming here.
Well, thank you guys. And I think just half the people left because they think when you first go as emotional as they were and as much energy have they gone speaking in front of a room full of adults. I'm almost forty. I get nervous every time I walk up there. I think you want to see it through to the end. I think they should be able to hear the board talk about it. And hear that even though they're not happy with some of the members up there, that member that they're offended by is a very important part of this board and has some wonderful things for our students at this school up to this point. So we're all learning and I think we're all willing to admit that. So I just wish they would have been able to hear it through. So I think, thank you to you guys for speaking it out.
I think we, we learned a lot from you guys tonight, especially in the corporate world. I mean, you know, pronouns. The way this, that's the way it's going. And that's.
But we're all learning, even the board, is what we're all gonna say. Every single board member is still learning. Every single one. Something may come out and be like, you don't agree with, but like I said, we're all still learning.
But you did the right thing by showing, right? As they appreciate.
We showed up and told them so many things.
Tired of seeing our faces at the.
Or not yet. Keep going. Yes, in the back.
Okay, so I just wanted to say that the fact that people that walked out, gay, white, and walked out, because I feel like there was a lot of deflection in that area. And that it was a very much dismissal of the issue that we brought up today. And I see why those people walked out. I also wanted to say, to add on to what I was saying earlier, I too have been touched by the public that live in the hallways of Arrowhead several different times. So I'm curious to see where everybody here thinks that the real issues are. Are people getting touched in the hallways or are people getting touched in the bathrooms? I personally have never, ever have heard anybody getting touched in a bathroom among people that are trans or gay or any of it. I also am curious to as to what other people think regarding bathrooms and having transgender people in bathrooms with people that are not comfortable with those people being there. Why are we punishing trans people when they have been continuously dismissed and far from doing what they want to do? Why are we continuing to perpetuate trans people and people that identify with anything that's not signed up for? Why are we perpetuating the dismissal of them?
I'd like to respond to your comment from a parent over there on Syria. And I mean, no disrespect, I'm just trying to more, I'm sorry, I have to understand. What we're trying to do is to educate people that, that the idea of letting trans people use their is not a foreign rule or thing for, for some time. There's been, in Kentucky, they had a awesome place for two years and it's still going. That allows transgender students to go back to and match their gender identity. And, and since then, there have been no problems. And that is a school, just like Arrowhead High School, and there have been no problems there. So this is not like a foreign rule. You can see there's data. No problems. It's helping, it's helping suicide be reduced for transgender citizens, helping people be respected.
Don't get bullying easy fixed first because of the bullying that's
I think that bullying happens to trans people too.
Oh, no, absolutely, absolutely. I'm just saying, I, I don't want to create more spaces in which we're inviting the bullying to see from the hallways and the other spaces. I want to make sure that we're, we're creating a safe environment that.
You know, I appreciate all the comments we've had. We need, we do need to discontinue this. This is not a topic for discussion for the board. It's not on the agenda. This is actually a public comments section, okay? I appreciate all the comments. Believe me, I, I don't know why your comments about them feeling like they're being dismissed. I, I don't know where you got that feeling from. I didn't feel that sense at all. Excuse me?
They're dismissing that again. I don't know. But it was in and of itself.
Oh, what?
They should, and, and you don't, please don't speak on it. I'm just speaking on behalf of myself. I'm curious that that was sort of a excuse. I'm prepared to make, I'm prepared to just be like, oh, I heard what you were saying, but that in and of itself is very disrespectful. I can't believe we're about it right now. Because in meetings, they have to obey by what's on their agenda. So what's. No, they can't. No, they can't. You're kidding. You can't respond. He can only respond. Yeah, but we had a separate board over responding to this. She got permission. Yes, so that's what I'm saying. Okay, so that was it. Nothing else can be discussed right now.
Yeah, go ahead. I just want to, for those of you students that are still here, I think I could speak on behalf of the entire board. Appreciate you being here. It is unfortunate that the others left. And so if you can be to your ears on our behalf, number one, that we acknowledge how very, very courageous everyone has been to stand up and speak tonight. A top issue and a podium is tough. So we appreciate that. And then secondly, I think it's been highly educational. Thank you. For initiating this educational process with us. So please, please pass that along to your peers.
Awesome. With that, we're gonna go ahead and close this hour. We're gonna go ahead and continue with our board meeting. We still actually have a board meeting to conduct this night, so. Appreciate you being here. Appreciate, like Kim says, the courage it took for you to come in here. What I learned in that in-service was unbelievable. We'll be sharing that with the rest of the board. We will have further discussions on this, I assure you. We'll have opportunities for, we'll try to have opportunities for actual forums to talk about this in not a school board meeting environment like that. We have some center on this, December first. December first, but that's the legal discussion with the board.
But that'll be an open meeting. So it's, it's an attorney coming in about the legal legal issues around these topics. But it's an open meeting, so it's training for anyone that wants to be present.
Thank you. Yes.
It should be made aware that the front doors are locked, so you're unable to get in if the door isn't open.
What?
The, the front doors?
Yeah, they're locked. You can't get in to get to the door. Oh, you mean now? Oh, you mean now, right now?
They were, they were open.
They were, but the timer must have locked them.
I'm sure that's, I'm sure that's. Thank you.
That's our number one guy from the.
All right, even promoted to lockstep. All right, thank you. While we're gonna move on to curriculum, trick or some chokes. Okay.
Well, I'm gonna have, Sue's gonna speak. I'm just gonna say we were, we talked about the trip.
We had, we had two courses that were discussed for recommendation to come to the full board. The first course that would go into the twenty-two, twenty-three course guide comes from our music department. We had Grace Bilski, Jake Planchik and Sharon Mosler present the background work that they did regarding, adding a course called Music Production to the music department. Um, so they gave a little bit of background and rationale for that course proposal and where within the pillars of the music program that course would fit. Um, and the recommendation of the committee was to bring that forward to the board for discussion and action. We'll have that on the agenda for December eighth's, um, board meeting. Uh, the second, um, pardon, yes, the second one was with Leadership Two, which Rick Woody proposed to the curriculum committee. Um, Leaders' Mindset is a first, um, course that's been in place now, I think, going on four years. Or three years. Leadership Two would be a second, um, section or a continuation and a scope and sequence to that particular class that would also be in the twenty-two, twenty-three, course guide that will go for discussion and action on the December eighth, agenda. And then we reviewed two course revisions. One would be in Machining, which would be now, right now, that's a semester-long course taught of the tech ed department. That would go to a year-long course. And as Anthony explained, it would be there. There's just a lot of material, um, that can be taught in Machining and some student interest to carry that forward for a year-long course. And the other, um, which is already a course that we have approved in our course guide, is the Computer Integrated Manufacturing, which was part of Systems and Controls. Systems and Controls is going to separate computer integrated manufacturing is going to be taught out of the tech ed department. And Physics of Electronics, which is a project lead, the way class in digital electronics will be taught out of science moving forward. That was a combo class that'll be taught in separate departments moving forward for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So I gave that update. That doesn't need discussion or action. That was just an FYI. Um, and then I just let the board, um, committee members, the curriculum committee members know that we have a parent-informed choice meeting. This is a meeting for our rising ninth graders to look at the options that we have in three subject areas at the high school. Um, social studies, science and English. There's, um, an informational optional meeting. I sent all the information to the feeder schools earlier this month um, at six-thirty on November sixteenth at North Campus to discuss those freshman options. The reason why we hold a meeting so early in the school year to talk about course selection is there's some, pre-ACT testing and some preliminary work to consider uh, on the student's behalf and parents' behalf if they're going to choose those honors options or AP options as early as freshman year. So I was just letting the board know, as always, you're invited, um, to listen to the question, to the presentation and to the questions parents have about those particular options. So that was our.
But the passion from each of the three presentations we had for.
Lot of good stuff there.
The music, the, um, music, the leadership and the tech ed. It was, there's so much going on and the opportunities for the.
Tremendous.
It was really exciting.
So that'll come in conjunction on December eighth's board meeting with the twenty-two, twenty-three course guide. And our next meeting is December second. It's six forty-five.
All right, thank you. All right, financial legislation, right? Yes, um, we not, um, last week, we, we report, um, to consider the tax levies and the budget approval. The approved budget as, uh, modified it, uh, from the August meeting to the actual. Tax levy. The, um, revised budget was less, uh, the total tax, school tax levy was lower from the August meeting to the October meeting. The August preliminary budget was, tax levy was, were eighteen million, two hundred seventy-six thousand, eighty-six dollars. The revised budget took the tax rate down to sixteen million, seven hundred sixty-seven, thousand, six hundred seven dollars. The tax levy rate, or otherwise known as the no rate, had been set at, expected to be at two dollars, sixteen cents. It got revised downward to two dollars, thirty-six cents, about thirty-two cents. So that was, uh,
I think that's.
Thank you, Craig. No, no meeting schedules applied?
No, no meeting schedule. Let us know. Hey, who could that for a while? We'll start something. All right, buildings and grounds. We met on November third and the main topic of the meeting was about the Pizer study we had done. Like the poor. The Pizer study is a study of our, all the asphalt surfaces in the, in the district. Including the roadways and all the parking lots. Most of the parking lots are about twenty-two years old and in deteriorating repair, curing conditions. As you know, uh, you know, twenty-two years is a pretty long time for certainly for your personal driveway, that kind of stuff. No difference here. Other than patched up to, uh, keep them operational. Uh, they're, each of the, each of the areas were identified by, um, current status, if you will, and longevity expectations. We have a couple of sections that were identified as being at the end of their useful life and near failure, which will need to be addressed. As I recall, just those were over about a million and a half dollars, just for those couple of areas. And in total was about, uh, around ten billion dollars, five million, five million dollars total. Yeah, five million dollars total for all the, all the needs we have for asphalt areas. Uh, we're gonna be developing a replacement plan and maintenance plan similar to what we have for roofs and some of the other areas in the building. So we can try to space that out, uh, tactically and in logical sequence. Again, we have more needs and we have funds unfortunately. So a lot of other things that need budget issues as well. So that's pretty much it for building the grounds. Uh, next meeting is going to be, uh, December first. Okay. Personnel, uh, and me, next name will be determined. Yeah, we've got. Must be the great resource, uh, telling us when. We've got some statutory responsibilities. The one that's coming to come up in December is, uh, initial review of administration contracts. Discussion on that, uh, it's like we're looking at, uh, the possibility of a meeting, uh, December tenth or Wednesday the fifteenth or Thursday the sixteenth. If you're on that committee, you're like attending personnel for many meetings.
It's probably won't be in the sixteenth because I'm choosing that policy.
All right.
All right.
All yours. Ten to the fifteenth, if you have a strong, you can whisper in my ear, we'll bring that out tonight. Try and make sure. Thank you.
Donna, speaking of policy. Well, the parent perception survey went out today for all the students and their parents. Um, so hopefully we'll get some results that can happen to be soon, three weeks, correct? Yeah, two.
Twenty seconds.
So it was administration, it was board members. I have to give special thanks for Daryl, who, uh, who really gave some great suggestions and shaping it up and making it absolutely perfect. Um, so hopefully we'll have some answers for that. And also one of the questions in there was possible, parent, uh, board administration feedback sessions and what they would like to see covered. So, um, I'll be curious to see what those results are. Next board meeting, November eighteenth, and then as I told Tim, possibly December sixteenth as well. There you go.
Here's the, that was eleven eighteen, eleven sixteen.
Eighteen, November eighteen.
November eighteen.
And that was the meeting that the board decided we would talk through if there's going to be a COVID contingency plan or not.
Yeah, I think there were a bunch of other topics came up tonight that were gonna be, yeah, policy as well.
Thank you. I'll take December sixteen.
Okay. Here's that's it for the committee reports. WASB, uh, I think you all received a letter from the WASB from, uh, from, from the, from John Ashley, the executive director of WASB, uh, notifying us that, uh, WASB has withdrawn from, the board directors has chosen to withdraw from, uh, the National Association of School Boards as a result of some of the comments that were made by them. I responded to, to him and I said, uh, thank you for your time, very timely email. We'll have a board meeting tomorrow night. I realize that everybody got that letter. I was gonna play it, but personally, I'm very happy with the WASB decision to draw from NASB. I certainly agree with your comments and wholeheartedly support the board's decision. So they're gonna be evaluating, um, future steps. Uh, the NASB is looking for a new director and then we'll see where that goes and possibly evaluate their stance sooner down the road. I don't know if the same board members have any comments on, on that particular item or not.
No, I just thought it interested me. I sent them back and asked if it was because they labeled parents who came to school were these domestic terrorists. And they said that was part of the.
Sure, that was.
I think this has.
Withdrawn. Yeah, it's, uh, pretty, yeah, pretty decisive. Uh, the annual convention, annual WASB convention, which is typically held downtown at the, uh, Wisconsin Summer of the Year, is going to be January nineteenth to twenty-first. Uh, everybody's welcome to go. It's very enlightening. Uh, we've got some very good breakout sessions. Uh, if you do care to go, please notify Kate prior to December first, uh, so she can send a list of who's going in at one time. I am planning on going, Kate.
That's the early bird discount, right?
Right, that's where I kind of signed. Yeah, I'm, I'm a little frugal. So even though that's six weeks or eight weeks ahead of time, then we get the early bird discounts rather than waiting until.
Uh, January nineteenth through the twenty-first. And you can go the whole thing. You can pick and choose where you want to go, um, et cetera. So don't feel like if you sign up yet for all three days. Okay, that's, it's a very, it's very informative. So I thought it'd be very, very worthwhile. Tim, do you have anything on the WASB?
I do not.
Uh, new business, employee transactions. Hopefully we have any resignations or retirements. We have one contract, a level of appointment for a public advisor for seven hundred seventy-seven dollar liberation. We have a motion to approve. They moved second to approve your contracts. A further discussion. There it is. Uh, discussion actually to accept donations. This is in the second month in a row. We've had some very, very nice donations. Yeah, I guess. So, uh, Technology Education Auto received a two thousand and five Lexus S four-door sedan as a donation. And a two thousand, twenty-eight month ten of minivan. I was saying when I first saw that, I thought, two thousand, that's not bad. It's twenty-one years old. Time is moving on. That's like, whoa. I also had a engineering manufacturing ceremony donation, uh, for twenty-five hundred dollars from a private individual and a five thousand dollar one from Silver's Tool and from Bradley Corporation, a twenty-five thousand dollar donation.
I'm really accepting this donation.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
It's another discussion. Sue, do you happen to know what that twenty-five thousand dollar donation was?
That's, that's the one from the Mullet family that I had referred to.
Oh, that's right.
A month or so ago.
That's right.
It's through their corporation, Bradley Corporation, which is probably why you're not, you know, it's not jiving.
No, I was just wanting to recall what the executive.
It's, well, it's for the, um, tech ed program, but it's machinery. And so we're part of a, I guess it's a grant program where if businesses contribute, they're looking for a five-year commitment. So we will count that as five thousand per year. And then through that grant, it's looking for matching, um, matching dollars that we'll receive.
The Technology and Engineering Department has an ongoing spreadsheet and a list of needs of high-tech equipment and things that need to be replaced. And so that list has been in place since twenty sixteen, seventeen, fifteen, sixteen. Uh, and they just, as things can get replaced or repaired or get, um, we have some things on consignment and loan. Uh, we try to make sure that we've got up-to-date equipment. And so the, um, those pieces of equipment can be upwards of a hundred thousand, a hundred fifty thousand, two hundred thousand dollars. Our budget can't support that all the time. So the donation process, the grant process, best way to tackle those pieces. We're very grateful.
Thank you. And we had, and we had our most donations of equipment, uh, some of it's been, I mean, high-ticket value items that have been donated to us. Some of them have been donated to the point where we will replace it in three years or five years. It's pretty amazing what they, how supportive.
Premier Tools has been a great partner.
Yes, absolutely. All right. All those in favor of accepting a donation, say aye.
Who was the second on that?
Yes.
Who was the second?
Okay, discussion, action on the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three calendar, school calendar. It's just the calendar.
Um, the calendar is back for discussion and action. We had it on the agenda last month, as you recall, and there was some discussion and questions. Um, Tim had asked if there was the time built in for, to address snow days. And I had perceived that to me was their extra time built in, which there was not. We did not add two days to the school calendar or to the teacher contracts and so forth. After a discussion, we clarified what was really meant was, do we have a plan for how we will address snow days? And we do. So if, if we need to use snow days, the, um, Monday, April tenth, which is currently scheduled as a non-school day, would become a school day if we need to use that. We have an extra half day of time built into our schedule, our calendar, our instructional minutes already per what the Department of Public Instruction requires for high school level. And then.